Hi guys. Hi, hi, Pankaj, hi, Ritamra.
Hello.
Welcome back post Diwali. I hope it was wonderful for you all. White say, how is it?
Awesome.
It was good actually.
Good. And what about you, Pankaj, how was it for you?
It's just awesome with my parents in law, I am here now.
That's wonderful, that's wonderful. Okay, so did you guys like, I know it was festival and everything, but did you practice the journaling exercises and the meditation?
Ankitah, as you know, like I worked, I looked, watched your videos today.
I, I know about you, Ritamra.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, yes, I did, I did, I did yesterday as well on the journaling part, I did it in the morning actually. And okay, so the main difference that I have, I mean, I figured out a real difference actually, the day one I did, then I did the day two. And today, day three, it seems like I have started knowing myself more and loving myself more, there is a huge change actually. Before I, I was unable to connect with myself, now I can feel a connect actually.
That's wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Thank you for sharing Ritamra. Now let's start with our.
Ankitah, I have a question if you are.
Yeah, please go ahead, go ahead.
You know, earlier I used to do mirror talk, okay?
Alright.
Somehow when I initially started and so I thought of having your experience on it.
Yeah.
Almost ten days, fifteen days, I felt very good, very positive. Exactly what you told in the first video, look in the eyes and appreciate yourself and affirmations. After that, it became pretty normal here, like. For example, if I'm doing my affirmation for ten times and having a good feeling, afterward I had to repeat it for let's say twenty times to have the similar kind of feeling. So is this what happens because of the, you know, the way we get used to it or?
No, 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 no. This means you see, now I'll tell you what happens. Once you start, in the beginning the a phase comes wherein you are just not able to establish a connect with yourself. Then a stage comes wherein you are able to connect so beautifully with yourself. Then a fragment would come wherein you will start feeling extremely low about it. Now it depends from people to people, okay? You will start feeling extremely low about it, you would be more cranky, you would be crying more and you will feel low. Because you are able to connect to yourself, to the inner child who has been really hurt and glimpse me, Hamee saree, who moments of situation, yaad aate hain, jahan pe hum chizho ko correct karte hain, which makes a pretty emotional. So ek vo fragment aata hai and after a certain time and then with some people, what happens is that exactly what your question is that you started feeling the same thing after repeating twenty times. This is because you made that affirmation a sentence. An affirmation can never be just a sentence and affirmation has to be a feeling, a feeling, a real deep feeling that you want to experience for you, for your, for your best. So if that particular sentence is not giving you that kick, that belief, reframe it, change it. So that you can again connect because you see lifelong, let's say, for example, I am trying to achieve something X in my life, okay, or X thing in my life. Now I cannot keep repeating the same affirmation throughout my life. I need to change it as per requirement. Now, for example, you felt that, you know, I have to repeat it twenty times, rethink on it, rethink on the sentence that you made and then think ponder over it, that why are you feeling that you have to say it twenty times? What is that something that has changed? Reflect on it, that what has changed in it? Why, like ask yourself, it is like a prompt to you, why I have to repeat it twenty times? Initially you will maybe not able to write anything, why kya answer hota hai, just main nahi connect kar pa rahe, nahi connect kar pa rahe, dimaag ye bolega hamara, but no, that is what you have to, you know, like eradicate and you have to think and you have to figure it out, that why this is happening and the easiest way and many a times which I have experienced is change the affirmation. Just the way in the beginning when you do mirror work initially you say I love you and you're not able to connect, but when you change it to I am trying to love you, I am wanting to love you. Change ho gaya na vo chiz?
Hmm.
Effect padaa uska.
But like try is a try, right? Or they are, it means you are still working towards it.
If a person is wanting to say, you know, that okay, fine, I love you, I love you and they are not able to do that thing, to hum kuchh aur free, I just gave you an example, kya hum kuchh aur change karte hain, like we change the sentence to make that thing work. Now when that thing is not working, we will change that thing also.
Okay.
You understood?
So is it a, is it something which is everybody goes through this cycle and Lusa has written that, I haven't read this.
Yes, 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 it's nothing different, it's very common, rather many a times, like two times it happened with me, I reached on the tenth day, I reached on the twelfth day and after that I was not able to complete it only. I used to feel so cranky, I used to feel so sad. And the very third time it happened, I was able to complete the whole thing, the whole journey, so it happens, it happens.
Sure.
I hope I answered the question.
Ha, ha, definitely, I think we'll experience and then keep on sharing it.
Alright, anybody would be interested in reading it? Or shall I go forward?
I, I can if Ritamra wants, she can.
Yeah, please go ahead, Pankaj, go ahead.
Ek sekna, I need to, I think you have to enlarge the view.
I have done it, wait, let me do it more.
We'll scroll, me, take it, thoda kam kar diye, varna I like it is just not.
Yeah, is this fine?
Yeah, this is okay.
Alright.
Thank you. So D three, monitoring yourself talk. Today you learn more about changing the messages, you give yourself clearing out negative thoughts from the past so you can live in the present moment.
So now I will ask you to take a pause, Pankaj, and exactly taking the question that you mentioned somehow we landed up with this sentence that what are we going to learn today? That about changing what is actually going on in our mind and trying to be in right now, in the process what is happening right now. Because we are conditioned and our mind is such a machine that it always tries and finds some other meaning or the action from something or the other and mostly in a negative sense. So today what we are going to do, today we are going to actually learn how to be in present and minus out the old patterns that we have been following and thinking and you know, making our mind like what a bin, let's go forward.
Thanks. Now that you are on day of your mirror work, are you feeling a closer bond with your friend, your mirror? Each day that you practice mirror work, you may fall in love with yourself a little bit more. Each day it becomes easier to say your positive affirmations and truly believe them. Should I continue?
Please.
The best way to love yourself is to release all the negative messages from your past and live in the present moment. So today, I'd like to work with you on changing what I call yourself talk, what you say to yourself in your head.
Yeah, alright. Thank you so much, Pankaj. Alright, so you know guys, what happens, I will take a very, very basic example. We have heard this statement many a times, many a times. Why are you crying like a baby? Then, bane nahi rohte, a man should never cry. This is something bohot common to me sunne ko milega. Like even when you are in college and your friends are there and if a man supposed to, you know, get teary eyes, unki frenzy, unko repeat kar kar ke bol bol ke, you know, they will feel as if they have done some crime and then they feel shy about it, that oh my god, being a man, I'm having tears in my eyes, there is something definitely wrong with you, oh my god, it is so embarrassing, deep down, they start to feel this thing because that is what they are listening all the time, back home, among friends and everywhere. Alright, but do you think genuinely that that is true? If a man cries, is there something wrong in that? If a man is crying, does he become a woman, like is it something wrong and if as a female we are crying, is there something wrong in that? There is nothing wrong in that, right? So this is a wrong notion floating everywhere and we are totally convinced with it also, that yes, oh my god, he's a man, he is crying. So I just gave you an example of, you know, a negative belief that is inculcated in us. I gave you a very regular, very relatable example, which is always floating, not a particular example, alright. Now what happens? When it is said self-talk, you will realize that if you're trying to find out the deepest answer, which we want to, you know, like sometimes we really introspect, what happens when we introspect? We are in a stage of silence and we are actually doing the best of the self-talk that we are doing to us. And if that's introspection is in a good way, we will always come with a positive research. So this is something, how a self-talk is important. So right now, in today's thing, in today's session, in today's chapter, what we are focusing on is that how self-talk is important and how self-talk in a positive way is important wherein we will unlearn, we will unlearn the negative thought process that we have been doing always and we will be taking it in a positive note, we'll be shifting it to a positive note, that's what we are going to learn. Shall I take it forward? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Sorry guys, I just got disconnected, there was some electricity issue that happened and because of that, like I'm so sorry.
That's perfect.
Okay, so I will share, is the screen on share right now, nona? It's not.
No, it's got removed.
I have to share. Alright, so I think I'm back.
Yes, second where I think we are already done or you have.
Did you guys understood that what we are going to do today in today's session? It's about eradicating all kind of self-talk, which is, you know, like the, sorry, the belief that we have inculcated in us from such a long time and without questioning anything, you know, without questioning anything, which is a very difficult thing because it is like a process which we have to keep on doing, but we have to be present, that is what our challenge is. That is what our challenge is, I think every second person is facing this challenge to be in now without questioning and trusting the process. So yeah, let's go forward guys.
Thanks. Too often we accept the early messages from our parents, our teachers and other authority figures. You were probably told things like stop crying like a baby, you never clean your room, why won't you make your bed? And you did what people told you to do in order to be loved. When you were young, you might have gotten the idea that you are acceptable only if you did certain things. Acceptance and love are conditional. However, it bears remembering that others' approval was based on their ideas of what was worthwhile and had nothing to do with your self-worth.
So any of you can share any of the instance from your.
I think honestly there are so many of them, since childhood and, and believe me, like some of us are doing this program, but then people who aren't, they are still going through the cycle, whether their parents and their children. Knowledgeable or not knowledgeable as well, educated, not educated, so I think there are innumerable, a kid goes through it.
It happens and you know, a very basic example that I think I even mentioned, I always try and use the most common example that everybody can relate, okay? So I remember in yesterday's session, I mentioned it that since childhood, we are always given, you know, this greed, okay, fine, if you are going to be a good baby, then this Christmas, you're gonna get so and so thing. Alright, okay, if you are going to get good grades, you are going to get this thing and gradually we don't realize, it becomes our pattern wherein we feel that, okay, if I am not able to do so and so thing, if I'm not able to achieve so and so thing, then there is something wrong in that. If I scored seventy percent instead of eighty percent, I have done something wrong. And then it depends from person to person, how this feeling changes into a big question for each individual as we grow up, we start questioning our self-worth. Our self-worth, unka beta, chobeis saal me hi kama raha hai.
I got this.
You are twenty eight, you are not, you, you are like, still you're like this, okay, you are a divorcee, tumara kuchh nahi ho sakta, you are a single parent, tumara kuchh nahi ho sakta, unko to dekho, unki vo chiz ho gayi, so all these things collectively in each and every person builds. Because you know, we are adults now and as we become adult, we become too complex, too, too complex. So you know, this whole thing of questioning us, it really becomes, you know, a normal thing for us. So right now, because we are doing this thing and we are blessed enough to at least have this knowledge that it is not about us, it's about the conditioning that we have seen, we have got, the situations we have been through. So yes, we will be seeing a positive side to it and we will be working on what is important. So do you want me to read it further or you would be comfortable reading it?
Maybe I can give my own personal example here.
Please go ahead.
This is quite personal though, but then good for learning.
Comfortable, yes, please go ahead.
So I've been, I've been going through something called OCD, obsessive compulsive disorder since twenty years, two decades. But then with God's grace, there has been ample amount of improvement with whatever I've been doing. But the, but with these sentences now and they're kind of, when you keep on repeating, keep on repeating with the environment over there and it goes to the subconscious layer and comes in a different format in a conscious level later on. And, and people say like in US or in the world, like one out of four, one out of five are going through this kind of a phase, so OCD is, is very much a subdivision of anxiety and people are going through this kind of a thing. So there needs to be a little, quite drastic change, you know, the way we treat ourselves and others to avoid this kind of a thing.
Yes, agreed totally, totally. The most common, you know what, I see, I am not much aware of OCD, whatever little knowledge I have, okay? So I would just mention that I, what I feel that many of us have this particular thing wherein we want everything to be arranged in one particular style. I don't know what is it, like I have seen a couple of my own friends, they happen to go at someone else's place and on the table if something is not kept in a particular, they will get up and they will start arranging things and this is so common, this is so common.
Isme thoda jada ho, intervention karta, utte difference hai, but as you said, na, it is so common that what I have seen like, it is very difficult to differentiate between or draw a line, kya kabhi bhi yahan se us taraf trickle ho jaayega. It just needs a spark. So you know, I, I think we have to do something like that, continue it back.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate Pankaj for sharing something which is so personal to.
That's fine.
Alright. So shall I take it forward or you would be okay reading it?
I'm comfortable, in case Ritamra wants to.
Ritamra, do you want to take it forward?
That is fine, Pankaj can continue, it's fine.
Okay.
Alright, okay.
These are, I think we are here.
These are the early messages.
Okay. These early messages contribute to our self-talk. The way we talk to ourselves inwardly is really important because it becomes the basis of our spoken words. It sets up the mental atmosphere in which we operate and attracts our experiences to us. If we belittle ourselves, life is going to mean very little to us. However, if we love and appreciate ourselves, then life can be a wonderful choice gift.
Okay, so for this particular paragraph, I will give you an example of a book that is called as the magic and let's say, chalo main agar magic book ko bhi hataa deti hu, I will just talk about a very simple thing that is called as vibration, okay? So everything has some vibration, alright? And the kind of vibration that we are vibrating on or we carry, we will attract exactly those situations, those circumstances and that's how our life is going to be. Alright, so this is exactly what it is talking about. That what you are going to feel, because you know, when we are going to do a self-talk and we are going to talk really, really good things about ourselves, we are going to attract such tribe, the people who are going to appreciate us for what we are. We will come across, you know, situations wherein we, if we are trying to, you know, grow in a particular sect, we will be growing because that is what, you know, our frequency is, that is where we are vibrating. So this is exactly what is talking about. Be happy and you will have happy people around.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Yeah, Ankitah. Uh. Ankitah, so I would like to add on to it.
Please, please.
So, yeah, so this is so relatable to me because earlier what used to happen that I used to be like cranky too much and I used to be complaining, especially in professional things, I was like, why these are, why people are like this, why do they just, you know, play politics and complaining, complaining and complaining? Then I figured out next time that because I'm complaining, so I was staying at a different level only and I was not able to see beyond that. Maybe there might be ten sides or like many infinite sides to that story. So ultimately, so the phase that is going on right now with me, I understand now that if we keep on complaining, that means we are just staying in a particular zone. So I mean, the point is like, it is the way and also other than that, the way we are looking into the things, we think that this is only the ultimate thing that is happening and nothing else is beyond that. So yes, I kept on doing the self-talk to myself, no, I want to be this type of person. Then I started getting that type of environment and it was like, super surprising and magical too, but yes, this really happens, this affirmation thing, this was really happening and now I keep on telling what I want to do and I make correct wishes because all my wishes comes true sometime later.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful.
That's awesome.
Okay, so I will take this paragraph, okay? I love to read, so I will just take one paragraph and then you guys continue, okay? If your life is unhappy or you are feeling unfulfilled, it is very easy to blame your parents or the almighty. Them and say it, it's all their fault. So this line is something that totally goes with me and I don't shy away from saying that, I buy this. I was a person who was very easily able to see that because yes, I was facing such situations in my life that all I used to see was that, what I got out of being a good person, like in my eyes, obviously, I, I always thought, you know, myself to be a good person and I asked a question that why me, why me? And because of some or the other situation, I used to end up complaining and blaming, okay? So I will not say, koi aur apne example do, I am myself saying it that I used to do this thing. However, if you do that, you will stay stuck in your conditions, your problems and your frustrations. Indeed, exactly this is what happens. Rather you will start attracting more such situations, your relationships will get more complexed, you will get earlier if you used to get hundred reasons, later on because if you keep complaining, you will get thousand reasons, that why it is becoming more difficult for you. Words of blame will not bring you freedom, indeed it is true. Your words have great power, so start listening closely to what you say. If you hear yourself using negative or limiting words, you can change them. If I hear a negative story, I don't go around repeating it to everyone. I think that it has gone far enough and I let it pass. However, if I hear a positive story, I tell everyone. Yes, agree. Now for this, I will give you a very, very small example.
May I deton?
Please go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry to intervene, huh?
Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm a, somehow I feel like a lot of storyteller in office as well and that happens every now and then. So on this one, no, I have personally experienced this, okay? Half of the time with my team, let's say there is a meeting of half an hour, fifteen minutes goes in the, last fifteen minutes goes in the, all on positive talks, how is the life all about and how do we look at it? Believe me or not, our ears here first, right? Because that's where our mouth is the closest to the ear. Samne wale ko sunai dene se pele, hume sunai deta hai. And after that session, I really feel there is a change in myself as well. You know, samne wala to bota hi usme change hai, par mujhe khud me change latta hai. And so this kind of really touch and go, touch and go all the time can make a huge difference.
Yes, yes, indeed, indeed. You know, if you will sit around those people who are, you know, a complaint box all the time, you will yourself feel that, you know, your vibration and your energy has gone to a different level, you will feel sucked out, you will feel sucked out. In the same way, for example, jo chote bachhe hothe, when you're around kids, you'll always, no matter how unhappy you are, the moment they are there, you will feel, oh ho, baad achha lag raha hai mujhe. Why? Because those little bundle of joy, you know, they don't have negativity in them and they are like just so happy and positive that we get that vibration and we feel that and then we get all happy.
So yeah, Ankitah, one thing I will add into here, okay? This thing, this thing has been, same thing has been happening in the meetings and all. So what I started doing, it's like, I was like, I cannot always think this way that, okay, this person is draining my energy and I have to always also do one and one as well with this person. So I started taking it this way first, I have taken the charge of that call, I try cutting down the words, okay? So make it short as, as short as possible. Next thing what I do, I change my mindset towards that person. I've understood, probably this person is a complaint box due to XYZ reason, so let me just give love and let me just think in a positive way that it's okay, the process will be better soon, it's okay, let go. This has helped, this has helped me actually.
Very nice, very nice, very nice. Okay, so now Pankaj, you can take it forward.
When you are out with other people, really listen to what they are seeing and how they are seeing it. See if you can connect what they say with what they are experiencing in their lives. Many, many people live their lives and should, should, should is a word that my ear is very attuned to. It is as if a bulb goes off every time I hear it. I have heard people say it as many as dozen times in a single para. These same people wonder why their lives are so rigid or why they can't leave a situation? They want to have a lot of control over things they cannot control. They are busy either making someone else wrong or making themselves wrong.
Yes, this starts to happen when you have hit the, the bottom level of being a negative person, negative vibration, when you are vibrating only in the negativity, this is what happens. You cannot understand and you cannot differentiate between having an issue or having a complaint, sorting it and going forward. For you, it becomes a loop, why loop? If there's a case, a complaint, or a, if there's a grudge, or if it will go into another vicious circle and that is, you will start thinking about yourself, acha, mere me, ye problem hai, mere me, ye ghar bad hai, jab tak vo chiz ka circle khatam hoga, definitely because you are on such vibration level that you will attract some, some other issue, mere ko usne ye bola raha hai, mujhe isne ye kaha nahi, you will have some or the other thing as a vicious circle going on and on and on. If you are vibrating in. As a vicious circle going on and on and on, if you are vibrating in that set. So whenever a person is feeling this feeling that this pattern is being repeated in their life. If you are listening to us, please guys hold on and break it. Break it because this is like a vicious circle, alright, take it forward.
Especially it happens in the Indian context a lot.
A lot, a lot.
It's, I'll tell you, I don't know what, what enzyme gets generated in the brain, probably something should get generated. I am not a technical person on the brain, but then if you talk ill about others, there is some initial feeling of good. Ki koi mera sun rahe and then at the end of the talk you don't feel that good. And then as you said correctly, there is a vicious cycle that initially uptick and then the downtick. And then you are out of it. Okay, you can practice positive self-talk during your mirror work, making only positive statements about yourself. And repeating only positive affirmations. If any of the negatives self-talk from your childhood comes up, you can turn it around into a positive statement. For example, you never do anything right could become the affirmation, I'm a capable person and I can handle anything that comes my way. As you listen to yourself and others, you can become more aware of what you say and how and why you say it. This awareness help you change your self-talk into affirmations. That will nurture and heal you in body and mind. What a wonderful way to love yourself, that's a thumb. I release all the negative messages from the past, I live in the present moment.
Okay, so you know what, first thing I would tell you that guys do one thing, take small like sticky notes. And on each small sticky note, just start writing the most positive words that you feel for yourself. And stick it wherever you know like jaha bhi aap mirror work karte ho ya maybe apne room me. Apne almera ko the moment you open the almera, if you are not comfortable, like if you share your room with somebody and you're like. I don't want everybody to see it, but I just wanted to be, you know, in my personal space, open the almera and stick it around. In your washroom, on the mirrors, stick it around, in your diary, maybe in your diary also, you can, you know, like write all that sticky notes and keep. Opening and you know, doing whatever you want to do it, what happens that when you start seeing this thing. And you know, like, you know, you can just like put a picture of yours and around that put all that sticky notes. So the moment you look at it, you know that this, all these words are for you. Like capable, handsome, beautiful, gorgeous, abundance. Anything that you can relate to, independent. Anything that that you know you relate to, that you know best for yourself. And you will realize that how you will. You will be amazed to see the result that how the visualization first of all because it's your picture. And these words, they will go into your subconscious mind and you will actually start feeling that for yourself. You know, it is said na, jab you see jhoot ko bhi bahut barhi bolo, toh vo sach lagne laga hai. Toh hum kisi sach ko hi jo ek positive cheez hai, usko jab hum agar repeat karenge bahut barhi. So do you think that it's going to be something which is very good for us? So let's try and do this thing.
Can I suggest kar raha hun, Kita ji, you use a photograph and.
Yeah, yeah, just put a picture of yours, jo bhi picture jo aapko pasand hai, jo aapki favorite hai. Childhood se vo se hi, abhi se vo se hi, anything. And in that picture, I just want your picture. You're not sharing that space with anybody else, that is your space, okay? Your space, your words, your feelings, everything positive around that. And I'm not seeing that, you know, go and make a vision board or do something very hanky panky, no, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm telling you, you can even do it in your diary, you open your diary and your thing is right there. Okay, but just do this thing and try and see how it, you know, how it makes a difference and I'm sure it is going to.
Can you just uh suggest because now I'm, I I presently I'm traveling out of where I stay and I don't have that.
Okay, I will tell you, I will tell you, I will tell you, for this also what you can do, you can doodle yourself. You can just doodle yourself, make a stick figure of you, write your name. And this is you, because you know in this what matters, in this what matters is your emotion matters. You know that this is Pankaj, this is the stick figure, this is doodle, you doodled yourself the way you want to. Nice hair, big smile, big eyes, whichever way you want to.
Okay.
Make him wear shoes, nice shoes, with laces, without laces, do whatever you want to do. And around that, write the best of the small words, sentences, um any pictorial thing, anything that you want to do.
Which app facilitates that, sorry, I don't use that.
I am sorry, but I am not much of a person who, you know, go ahead with apps. I always feel these things are something in which a human touches important. Alright, okay. So going forward, your day three mirror work exercise. Stand or sit in front of your bathroom mirror, look into your eyes and say this affirmation. Whatever I say to myself, I will say it with love. And keep repeating it, whatever I say to myself, guys try it with me right now, maybe if you want to put yourself on mute, you can do that. But repeat it with me, whatever I say to myself in this mirror, I will say it with love. And when you are saying, you know what, all I want is. Kisi bhi affirmation ko repeat karo na. Usko pehle understand karo from your heart, like understand it. See that sentence, see the emotion of that sentence in you and then repeat it and I can guarantee you. That you will feel what you are saying and it will go into your subconscious mind like that. Try it out, see, like you know literally get in a soak, soak that emotion. So soak the emotion and then see, alright.
So can it be like, um. So they say like, there's a saying, right, fake it till you believe it, right, or fake it till you make it. Right, so and subconscious doesn't understand the difference between right and wrong. Is it the same applicable here, reasoning? Uh if I talk about health, okay, and if health is a point of little bit of concern, right? And and I repeat like saying I'm healthy, okay. The subconscious mind or the conscious will go and interact, counter it out. Ki you are like, you are saying you're healthy, but there are little bit of challenges around it, so the point is.
I'm not feeling it then.
You're not.
You are not soaking it, you are not believing it, that's why the counter question comes. This is what it is I'm talking about.
The soaking manner, you bring your, bring your senses into that?
Yes, you have to put in your senses, for example. I look at myself and I will say, Ankitah, you are beautiful, okay? I said this thing, I feel it from inside. Else meko normally bolna hai, jaha mujhe sir bolna hai for the sake of it. Ankitah, you are beautiful, Ankitah, you are beautiful, Ankitah, you are beautiful. In this, I am just repeating it and this will not make any difference. Until and unless I soak that thing. That's why it is said that, you know, whenever you are reading any affirmation, you really understand. Soak it, use your senses and then repeat it, I'm telling you, it's going to be wonderful, wonderful.
How many times do you repeat it?
For me, honestly speaking, please don't go by what I do, okay? In this book, it says at least hundred times, but for me, it's like, I never, I have never counted, I have literally never counted.
Ek stretch mein hundred?
No, 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 I initially, in this book it is mentioned that kam se kam hundred barhi repeat karo. In this book it has mentioned over the whole twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Yeah, but with me, it's like whenever I feel like. And then intuitively I keep on saying that until unless I'm feeling that, okay, fine, I'm lacking in this particular area. So I try and work on, for example, each day is not same, if someday I'm feeling something and I'm feeling I need to, you know, omit this negativity. I make sure that I repeat something to counter that, until unless I'm not feeling good about it. So there is nothing which is fixed, yeah, there 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 are few things which are fixed that I have to achieve in my. Which I want to, but apart from that, it keeps fluctuating, it's different every.
Okay.
Okay, is there a statement, is there a statement that you heard as a child? Uh I think we read this thing, no, 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 we did not. Is there a statement that you heard as a child that still sticks in your head? Maybe something like you are stupid or you're not good enough or whatever else comes to mind. Take time to work with negative statement and turn them into positive affirmations. I'm smart, I'm more intelligent than I realize, I'm a genius with an abundance of creative ideas. I'm magnificent person, I'm lovable and I am worth loving. This is the example I will give it to you, you know, when, when we, this you can see very easily. Um then we are teaching our kids. And somewhere or the other, they are not able to, you know, understand and they are scared because of something or the other, what we do. You always try and if you start scolding them, if they are, you know, if they are here, they'll, their standard will come here. Because they are getting scared and even if they are here and and you promote them that, no, 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 you're doing so well. See, understand, I know you can do it, I know you can do it, you will instantly feel a shift and they boom, they will always go up. So this is just a very basic example I gave it to you so that you guys can understand what I'm talking about. Choose one or two of these new positive affirmations and say them over and over again, keep saying them until you feel comfortable with them. And with this comfortable, they mean to say that you actually feel it, that yes, you own this affirmation, okay? Each time you pass a mirror or see your reflection in a window throughout the day, stop and repeat this loving affirmation. Now these are the journaling exercise, I'm gonna send you these journaling exercise in the group as well, so we'll just read it out. Did you repeat a negative story today? Write down how many times you repeated it and how many people you told it to. Now write down something positive, you can tell those people tomorrow, that will help them feel better about themselves. And everyone around them, write down the word should. Next to it, make a list of words to use instead, you might start with word could. Post several of the new positive affirmations you learned today on your mirror. So you can practice them wherever you can see, see, I was telling you now, that make sticky notes and put that, this is what they are talking about. Now, Pankaj, can you read this, your hard thought for us?
Okay, I always have a choice. Most of us have foolish ideas about who we are and many rigid rules about how life should be lived. Let's remove the word should from our vocabulary forever. Should is a word that makes prisoners of us. Every time we use should, we are making ourselves wrong or someone else wrong. We are in effect saying not good enough. What can be dropped now from your should list? Repairs the word should with the word could. Could lets you know that you have a choice and choices. We need to be aware that everything we do in life is done by choice. There is really nothing we have to do, we always have a choice.
Yes, like I will just give you a very simple example again. Agar hume kisi bachche ko koi cheez bolna hota hai, aur agar hum bolte hai, don't you know that you should have done this thing? I'm sitting here, you should bring me water. I use should and now if I change it, um could you please get me a glass of water? How does, you know, it sounded? You even gave respect to the other person. And the way you spoke, how the vibration of the whole thing changed. You gave freedom to that person, that could you please do that thing for me? Now that person has a choice, that. Shall I or I mean, it's it's up to me, but the way the vibration of the sentences, the person will end up giving you a. Again, I gave you a very basic example, but yes, so that you know, we can understand. So this is a very small meditation, let's do that. So can I request you guys to close your eyes, put your hand on your heart and start taking slow deep breath. Breathe in. And breathe out. Breathe in. And breathe out. Breathe in. And breathe out. See yourself surrounded by love. See yourself happy. And healthy. At home. See your life as you would like it to be. Putting in all the details. Know that you deserve it. Whatever details you are putting in, just be so sure that you deserve each bit of it. Then take the love from your heart and let it begin to flow. Filling your body with healing energies. Let your love flow around the room and around your home. Until you are in an enormous circle of love. Feel the love circulating so that as it goes out from you, it returns to you. Love is the most powerful healing force there is. Let it wash through your body. You are loved. And so it is. Now you can rub your palms together. And cup your eyes and cup your face. We are done for today, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Most welcome, most welcome, thank you.
Oh, you do homework on the chat.
I will be sending everything, I will be doing that, alright.
We'll see you tomorrow, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, guys, thank you.